For the dignity of all women who suffer from oppression, um, one in four.
At the forty five, number nine, get your gun at forty five, we need six.
For the dignity of all women who suffer from oppression, um, one in four.
At the forty five, number nine, get your gun at forty five, we need six.
For the dignity of all women who suffer from oppression, um, one in four.
At the forty five, number nine, get your gun at forty five, we need six.
For the dignity of all women who suffer from oppression, um, one in four.
At the forty five, number nine, get your gun at forty five, we need six.
Greetings, welcome to all our viewers. I am Dale Simmons, President of the League of Women Voters of Tulare County. We are nonpartisan, that is, we do not support or oppose any candidate. League's mission is to empower voters and defend democracy. We feel that holding a candidate forum is a standard practice for this goal. On behalf of our organization and our planning committee partners, we are all happy to present tonight's candidates forum for the contests of Isalia Unified School Board Trustees Area Five, Six, and Seven. For Area Five, we have incumbent Neeson Foster and challenger Megan Casper Saleno. For Area Six, we have incumbent Lucia Vazquez and challenger Christopher Pope. For Area Seven, we have candidates Nora Alstead, Randy Evans, Kalia Feliz, and Jackie Gabey. Um, thank you for tuning in tonight. With that, I will turn the screen over to James Ward of the Visalia Times Delta Tulare Advance Register. Thanks again.
Thanks Dale, and thank you for logging in today. Um, this is our first virtual forum, so we hope that our, uh, there will be no technical problems, but we may have some, we never know. Um, I wanted to go over some of the ground rules before we start. Um, all the candidates have agreed to these ground rules before they, um, um, came into the forum tonight. Um, we ask the candidates not to name any of their opponents, um, and, uh, no personal attacks, um, stick to the questions that we will be answering them. Um, each candidate will have a two-minute opening statement, then we will go to, uh, questions that the coalition of, uh, community groups that, um, put together this forum, uh, came up with. And then, uh, after that, we will have a short break and then go to questions from the community that are coming in either live through Facebook or email, uh, as we, as the conference goes, the, the, the debate or the, uh, forum goes on. Uh, we have picked in random, um, people, um, speaking, opening, and I will, uh, um, just, uh, name the person who has the, the floor for their opening statement and go on there. It's, as I said, it's random. And then when we go to questions, we have, um, a lineup of questions, so no one will, uh, go first every time, or second every time, or last every time. It's, uh, it's randomized, but everyone will have a chance to answer the question. So, um, if we all know the ground rules, I will start, uh, with, uh, Mr. Foster with his opening statement.
Good evening. My name is Neeson Foster, and I'm currently the Area Five representative, uh, on the school board. I want to thank the numerous civic groups that are sponsoring this forum tonight, especially the League of Women Voters on the hundredth anniversary of the, uh, Nineteenth Amendment, the birth of my mother, and, uh, the, the death of a very prominent, uh, legal mind. Uh, I, uh, am the son of a neurosurgeon and a California art historian. Uh, I have moved to Visalia, and, uh, I immediately, uh, decided to get involved in, uh, school affairs. I served on the, uh, Conyer Elementary, then the Visadero Middle School, and then the Mount Whitney, um, uh, school site councils where I improved education at each site. I then, uh, served on numerous district advisory committees, and then I was asked by many people to run for the school board. I was elected in 2018, and, uh, I have been endorsed by many civic leaders, uh, among them, uh, Councilman Phil Cox, Councilman Brett Taylor, and also, um, many educational leaders, uh, like, uh, Superintendent Tom Jim Petro of Molson Seltana, Juan Lopez of, uh, Parlier. Uh, I've also, uh, been endorsed by Debbie Holgane of the County Board of Education. I'm very much looking forward to talking with you tonight about our successes and about our plans for the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. We'll go, uh, next to, this is Gabey.
Good evening, and again, thank you to the League of Women Voters and Times Delta for hosting us tonight. Um, a brief background is I actually started as a student here in Visalia Unified, um, AM kindergarten at Conyer, and Mrs. Springmeyer's class. Um, and then, um, for the last twenty-three years, I've been in education, started as a teacher, and then a site administrator and a district administrator, everything from an assistant principal at AFU sites to principal to area superintendent. Um, equally important is that I'm a parent in our district. I have a high school freshman and twins in fourth grade. So those of you with kids in our system know that that's an invaluable lens that truly tells us how our decisions impact students. Um, so this really just all adds up to that I know our district from the inside out. Um, I know the questions to ask, I know the follow-up questions to ask to those. I know how to not be placated with surface answers and information, and I know how to expect results and set up systems that empower our people to achieve those results. Um, within that experience, um, I've led a school site where we had a vision. Together, we strategically planned, balanced our budget. Every single person was valued, where we raised achievement, we made students feel that they were significant and belonged, and really that we loved them, and that we were going to work individually and together to make each of them successful. And so throughout my career, I've always led to inspire and create opportunities for greatness to emerge, and for each of us to achieve more than we thought capable. Greatness, success, high achievement, it's not reserved for just a few. We all have the ability to create it. I want to create a great Visalia Unified. Um, I've had experience at the school site and now want to bring that to the district level. I want our district to set the standards for how we educate students. Why not us? Why not Visalia Unified? Let's come together and choose to build a great Visalia Unified for our community and our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we'll, uh, we'll be, uh, talking, uh, hearing from Ms. Feliz.
Hi, thank you for having me. I'm Kalijia Feliz, and I'm running for Area Seven. I was born and raised here in Visalia and received my master's degree from Fresno State, um, University in Social Work. I'm a clinical social worker and trainer for Tulare County Office of Education. I provide mental health services and social emotional skills to students in the school setting across the county, and also provide trainings countywide on subjects such as mental health and suicide prevention, trauma, um, human trafficking, and social emotional learning. I'm also an educator. I am an adjunct professor for Fresno Pacific University and an education instructor for College of the Sequoias. I truly believe in inclusion, equity, and diversity, and I believe in mental health and addressing the needs of the mental health of our students, of our staff and teachers, of parents through services on campus. I believe in equal access to education, especially in times of COVID-19, understanding that we have students who may not have internet connection, or we have families who are monolingual and may not be able to help their kids distance learn. And so I believe in helping teachers feel prepared to effectively distance learn and giving them the tools and training they need to have an effective classroom virtually and in person. And I also believe in funding and being wise with our funding and ensuring that we are utilizing our funds in the most appropriate way, and maintaining our staff because they're desperately needed. I would love to have your support, and I am open to any questions and allowing people to get to know me a little bit better, and I hope that you will support me so that I can bring, um, some of these issues and fight for these issues in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next up will be, um, Ms. Alstead.
Hi, thank you all, and thank you to the Visalia Times Delta and the League of Women Voters. Yeah, my name is Nora Alstead. I'm running for trustee Area Seven. Uh, I am currently in my thirtieth year as a teacher. I have been a music teacher, teaching primarily band and choir at the middle school level, a high school computer science teacher, a district technology coach, and I'm currently the, um, district teacher librarian and instructional technology specialist for Exeter Unified School District. Um, I've heard many people say that, uh, teachers don't make good board members because they don't understand budgets. Let me tell you, I have a complete grasp of local control funding formula here in California. I have served on district budget committees. I understand the supplemental and concentration grants and the, uh, LCAP process that goes with that. I also have a vast understanding of ed code, including the fact that at times I've had administrators coming to me asking for help with understanding and finding ed code. Um, I have lobbied both in Sacramento and in DC for better education policy. I have lobbied both in Sacramento and in DC for better education policy for all of our students. I have served on multiple boards. I am currently on the CVQ, which is the Central Valley Computer Using Educators Board. We cover Madera, Mariposa, Fresno, Tulare, and Kings County. I have also served on the Exeter Lions Club Board of Directors. Again, both of those providing me with knowledge for how to balance budgets. My CVQ board members will tell you that I am the one that's constantly watching that. Thank you again for being here this evening. Look forward to tonight's forum and look forward to providing some more answers for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Dr. Vasquez in her opening statement.
Can you hear me okay? We good? Yes. Hi there. Thank you so much for having us and for hosting us this evening. Yes, my name is Dr. Lucia Vasquez. My family's been in Visalia Unified School Districts for 60 years, and we still have members of our family that are current VUSD students. I started out as a student. I was a parent, school site council at Crowley and the Visidero. I've been PTA president. I have two years of classroom experience as a long-term sub and as a day-to-day sub. I've been elected nine years ago, and even though I'm elected by Area Six, trustee Area Six, which is the north side, I really, when you're on the board, you make decisions for all children. So when I go to a campus and they say, "Who's grandma are you?", I tell them, "I'm everybody's grandma." And then, of course, I take the opportunity to explain the structure of why the board represents them and their parents and their voice, because we are a public entity. Being on the board, I've done my best to focus on what's best for children, and sometimes that means hard decisions, making hard decisions and asking hard questions. For example, they brought us a CTE budget, and they brought the budget, but it didn't include any of the grants. So I sent it back, and I said, "I want to see all of it." Some people think I'm not for CTE, but that's not true. As a matter of fact, I just received the endorsement of the Electrical Workers Local 100. Thank you very much. I have the Carpenters Union endorsement. I have the Teachers Union endorsement and the California School Employee endorsement. So I do stand for transparency and voice. I thank you so much for your voice and for your support, and my website will be up soon, and look for those signs. They'll be up this weekend. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next up will be Mr. Evans.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm Randy Evans, candidate for Visalia Unified School District Board, Area Seven. I'd like to first start by thanking the League of Women Voters and the Visalia Times Delta and numerous other sponsors for making this evening possible. I've been married for 36 years and have one son who is a teacher at Visalia Unified, and have lived in our home in Area Seven for 29 years. I've worked with the property and casualty industry for 37 years and currently work for a large international adjusting company with contacts in Europe, South, and Central America, as well as here in the United States and in Canada. When I was young, I was taught that we are to give back to our community where we live. I served as a Boy Scout in my community where I grew up, as well as many service groups connected with my church and with the schools. In my adult life, I've served on the Citizens Advisory Committee of the City Council here in Visalia, the Visalia Oaks Booster Club, and have volunteered in various capacities at Crestwood, La Jolla, and El Diamante High School. Currently, I'm a parent volunteer at Valley Oak Middle School and a member of the VUSD Measure A Bond Oversight Committee. I'm a supporter of the visual and performing arts and career technical educational or vocational education, as some of us might put it. I believe in academic programs for our high school students, and one day would like to see our high school seniors have the opportunity to earn a two-year college degree upon graduation from high school. Strong communities are built around our schools. A well-educated student body affects the investment in our community in the form of good-paying jobs. However, when student achievement drops off, those well-paying jobs don't materialize, and businesses leave the community over the, and leave the community. Over the last several years, the district results have shown that student achievement has not advanced and in fact has fallen. Teachers have been leaving the district in astonishing numbers, and we need to bring back our student achievement in all subject areas while at the same time valuing our teachers and staff by creating a collaborative and congenial work environment that encourages cooperation and respect for one another. If elected, it will be my priority to bring these the best possible.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. We'll go on to Mr. Pope next with his opening statement.
Good evening. Thank you, Times Delta and the League of Women Voters for sponsoring this event. As mentioned, I'm Christopher Pope, and I'm running for trustee Area Six. I'm married to my beautiful wife Melanie. I have two adult sons that are married and are living successful lives. We also have two teenage girls that are still at home. I've enjoyed this event for several years, and I admit that it is much easier being in the audience than participating as a candidate. But the reason I'm here is because of my passion for our students. I retired just as of August 1st, and although it doesn't feel like it to me yet because I'm busy on the campaign trail, my constituents keep asking, "Why are you running?", and my response is simple: experience. 22 years of teaching has developed my ability to listen to parents, to understand staff perspective, and has fostered my love for children. I'm currently in training to teach driver's ed, and my students can read, and they can even memorize that DMV handbook, but will that qualify them as good drivers? It takes hours behind the wheel with practice and exposure to multiple experiences to be prepared. I've been in that driver's seat for 22 years. This school board is really the Board of Education, and we have two members of the Board of Education that have classroom experience. And even those two members are from high school. We have no representation for elementary schools. At every board meeting, decisions are made affecting our parents, students, staff, and literally our community. These decisions are made by members that have no behind-the-wheel training. I believe my classroom experience will enhance our school board. As I have listened to the pulse of our community, it's time for change, and I'm ready for the challenge. I'm looking forward to...
Next, we'll have Ms. Casper Soleno up with her opening statement.
Good evening. My name is Megan Casefer Soleno, and I'm running in Area Five. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight and for being here to listen to what we have to say. So I wanted to start this with just a little bit about myself. I grew up in Riverside, California. I was born and raised there. I then went on to the University of California at Santa Barbara, UCSB. There, I received my Bachelor's of Science in Environmental Studies, and I also met my husband, so it was a great place to do that as well. I went to complete my law school degree from the University of San Francisco. I was there for a couple years after graduation, and then my husband Carlos and I decided that we wanted to put down roots somewhere. We were looking for places to do that. Visalia seems like a really good fit because Carlos's hometown is Visalia. We have a lot of family here. We have a lot of support. I also knew that I wanted to be a public defender, and so it was very helpful that the Public Defender's Office in town was hiring. And so that's where I've been. I've been a public defender in town for the last five years. I'm a senior attorney in the office, which means that I represent adult felonies, and I represent them in some of the most serious cases that come across our desks and through our office. A little bit about my family, as I said, I met my husband Carlos in college. He is a teacher. He teaches math at Mission Oak High School in Tulare. And then we did come here to start a family, and we did that. We have a three-year-old daughter, Paloma, and a 16-month-old daughter, Bianca. And so these are the things that kind of encompass who I am and where I'm coming from. That's my background. I am endorsed by the Visalia Teachers Association, by the CSEA, and so I'm looking forward to representing my constituents and to you hearing more about my platform tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move on to the questions part of the forum, and we will be adding everyone into the stream, and everyone will be on camera for the duration of the forum. So make sure you all have your cameras on and be ready for your close-up. The question will also be on the screen so people can refer to the question as we ask the question. The first question will be directed to Mr. Foster, and it will be, "What do you think the main duties of the elected office you are seeking, and why are you running for that office?"
The main duties of the board trustee are, one, select a superintendent; two, provide infrastructure; and three, maintain a budget. And I have done all three of those as a board member. Why I'm qualified to be an elected official? Number one, I've been in the classroom. I have taught school. I've taught at the elementary level several years. Number two, as a male person, I come in contact with a lot of people. This allows me to get outside, quote-unquote, "the bubble", so I'm not getting information from one source. This allows me to make very positive, community-based decisions. And also, I have visited all of the schools in Visalia Unified, and I visit every school, at least one school a week. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next candidate up is Megan Soleno.
Thank you. Yeah, I think that the main duties, Mr. Foster kind of hit it on the head when he said hiring a superintendent. That's probably the most important role that a school board trustee does. And in hiring that superintendent, we're really looking for someone who's going to implement the goals and values and morals that you want to see reflected in your district. And so I think that that is the most critical. And on top of that, I think one of our big roles is helping with transparency, making sure that we're providing oversight to the public so that they can see what's going on with the school district, that we're asking questions, tough questions, questioning what's happening, always maintain our focus on what is important and what we value in our community to make sure that those are being filtered all the way down from the top to the bottom. And then lastly, it's facilitating communication, making sure that we are bringing voices from, bringing voices so that we're hearing from teachers, students, parents, to make sure that everyone's heard, that our communication is being there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pope is up next with the same question.
Yes, thank you. This reminded me and helped me to reflect about the time in my classroom and how, when we had this superintendent coming, that I explained to them that, you know, the principal is the boss of me, and as your teacher, I'm your boss, but really, your parents are the boss of everyone because they get to elect the board of trustees. And the board of trustees is really the overseer of all departments and even the administration. Right now, I feel like there's a lot of administration decisions that are being made without the board's insight and inclusion. So that's very important. Again, maintaining the budget in reflection. I am very thankful that we have had a board that has been financially frugal. Who would have thought that COVID would hit? And by being able to have a reserve, I think that's important. We need to. But we also need to focus on the teachers that we're losing. Why am I running? Because I think it's time for change. I sense the voice of the community, and they're ready for some change. Thank you.
Our next candidate up is Dr. Vasquez with the same question.
Hi there. I hope you can hear me now. I heard the reception hasn't been too good. So every elected official's job is to represent the public interest, and we happen to be school board members. So our focus has to be on children, on the way that money is spent, on the way our almost 3,000 students are getting their education, and how we take care of the three, almost 3,000, over 3,000 employees that we have. We do hire the superintendent. We also provide guidance. Oh, 30 seconds. We provide guidance and we show vision. So that means we have to make some of the hard decisions, the things like boundaries, what's going to project for being able to have property. Do you realize that we look at every single check that has been spent? We get a record of that. So there really is quite a bit of things to do as a representative, but that's the gig, and to represent the district. Thank you.
Next up, we have Ms. Alstead with the same question.
Awesome. Thank you. So let's talk about what is the board's action? What is it the board is elected to do? The board's elected to establish, maintain, set, prioritize, and monitor all functions of a school district. The superintendent's job, then, is to implement those policies and those actions that the school board directs. So why am I running for this office? Because at times, and I've been attending school board meetings in Visalia consistently now for about the last 10 years, and at times, it's been opposite. It's almost like the superintendent is directing the school board. The school board has to remember, what are their actions to be? That they do hire the superintendent, and that then the superintendent carries out the directives of the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question, next candidate is Mr. Evans, and the question, the question is the same.
Thank you. My decision to run for school board occurred a couple of years ago when I really began to see that student achievement really had not been advancing the way that the community expects. In fact, it had been sliding back. Pardon me. So I wanted to get involved to see what I could do to help provide some direction for the superintendent. I can't disagree with anything that anybody has said so far, but the one thing that I think is important that has been missed is to get the community involvement. We hear a lot right now that parents don't feel like they've been heard. Teachers don't feel like they've been heard. The community members, stakeholders, don't feel like they've been heard. So if I were to elected to the school board, I would make sure that all of those voices have a seat at the table, that they can participate in the direction of the district in the future, and of course, all the other items that the other members, the other candidates have exposed.
Thank you. Our next candidate, the question is Ms. Feliz.
Thank you. I believe the main duties are to oversee and help govern the school district and ensure responsiveness, accountability, open communication, creating transparency, and the ability to listen to teachers and other staff, students, and parents while maintaining equity, inclusion, including our values, and ensuring policy and regulation, in addition to budgeting consciously, maintaining and reviewing contracts while allocating our resources appropriately. I've studied policy and educational relationships, so I've worked with difficult clients, and I feel like all of that helps me to run for this office. I understand collaboration with parents and students and staff, including all of them at the table. 15 seconds. So I understand the barriers that are, all those groups are facing right now, and so those need to be addressed. We cannot continue to ignore them or silence all of those groups. They all need a seat at the table, and they all need to be heard, and I'm willing to bring those voices forward.
Thank you. Our next guest is Ms. Gabey with the same question.
Okay, so yes, I agree with many things that they've said, but I want to add to that, that yes, I think the board, one of their main duties that is lacking is adopting a long-range vision with goals, benchmarks, and metrics so that we collectively can understand what we're trying to achieve. We need to define what a great Visalia Unified will look like. How are we going to ensure learning and achievement for all students? And then have systems that give opportunities for input, feedback, and allow the best ideas to rise from... and allow the best ideas to rise from among us. We need to promote more collaboration and innovation, and the sharing of successes and learn from each other. And why I'm running for the board is I think I have a deep understanding of our educational system from multiple perspectives and want to bring that experience and expertise to our district and really look at how, what are those metrics? And how are we evaluating our programs based on real data?
Thank you. We're going to move on to our next question. And the question is, the district is facing budget shortfalls. What should the district budget priorities be during tough budgetary times? If cuts to programs need to be made, how should the board prioritize those cuts? And we will start off this question with Dr. Vasquez. Vasquez, I apologize.
Hi there. Yeah, I think we really have to prioritize student learning. That's what we're here for. That's our business. And to be able to do that, we need to incorporate teachers. I mean, teachers, teachers know. They're in the classroom. They understand what's going on in the classroom, how many of their kids need that extra intervention. So I really think it has to be a team effort to be able to get to the crux of what needs to happen. Yes, we're the board, and we make those decisions, and we have the admin. But we really have to do better at having communication systems so that we can work together. It's got to be a group effort. We need to do better at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Our, Mr. Pope is up next with the same question.
Yes, thank you. In prioritizing things, I definitely agree with Lucia that students need to be our priority. And I think that by looking to our teachers' association, we're able to do that. They are so good and in tune to what our teachers are needing and listening to those needs. And, you know, constantly having surveys to find out, what are those needs? What are some ways that they would have input on how we could help to minimize this deficit? So I think that would be a huge part because our teachers do need to be included in decision-making. And it seems like lately, they haven't been able to have as much voice as in the past. But there is definitely going to be some hard calls. And I think that's a good place for us to start, is by appreciating our teachers and valuing their input.
Thank you. Ms. Gaby is up next with the same question.
I think this relates to the last question in that if we establish a long-term vision and we have goals and benchmarks, that we then align our budget to meeting those goals. All of our budget items should relate directly to the goals we're trying to achieve. And of course, yes, we need to prioritize instruction and instructional support and start by making administrative or district office level cuts first. Currently, we don't have a way to evaluate our budget items. I have sat in cabinet meetings where we needed to make cuts, and we did not have a metric or data to look at which programs were most effective. It was off of a lot of anecdotes rather than the real data of what is actually increasing student achievement? What is best for our students? That should be the number one question with which we make all decisions. And so how do we then look at things, administrative costs, before we cut things to our instructional programs?
Thank you. Ms. Alstet is up next with the same question.
All right, thank you. So we are in a people business. Our budget, right now, is about 85% of the budget is on staffing. Yet, we don't bring all of our constituents to the table when we talk about budget. It's primarily the school board, the administration. I have sat on school budget committees as a teacher. Let's bring in, and I know it's difficult in a large district, but we still need to hear the voice of the teacher. We need to hear the voice of the classified. Because sometimes when cuts need to be made, those frontline people can tell you what are some of the things that you can cut. You know, we don't need quite so many photocopies. We don't need this because this keeps a service to a student. This keeps a class. This keeps a person that we essentially need. So we need to hear all the voices. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next person up is Mr. Evans with the same question.
This is a really interesting question because I think that reviewing a budget should be an annual activity. And reviewing programs to make sure that the programs that we've instituted have accomplished what we expect them to do. If a particular program isn't achieving the desired result, then of course, we should be looking at either doing something different or perhaps eliminating that program altogether. I have to agree, though, that student learning and student services are the priority of the district. And any cuts to any programs that would affect student performance or student services would really be something that I would be against.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next candidate up for the same question is Ms. Feliz.
Thank you. So I think budget cuts should be prioritized based on what is doing the least harm and causing the least restriction to our staff and students in terms of delivering education. This would take a comprehensive review and evaluation of what projects are currently being paid for and giving the least return to our students or our staff. This could be a perfect opportunity to include staff surveys as they would know firsthand what is working in and out of the classroom. We need their voice to be included in that. I do know that the things that have traditionally been cut in the past would be things like the arts or performing arts, music, theater, dance. And those are things that I would fight to keep in because those are the things I believe the students actually need and they actually enjoy. Because they need a variety within their education. So I do not believe it would serve our students well to continue to lose those opportunities to discover and explore their creativity. So it'd really take a critical evaluation of what is not working and what's going to be the least harmful to our students.
Thank you. With the same question, Ms. Salino is up next.
Most important thing we always have to focus on is we're here for the children. So what's best for the children and what's best for their learning? So that being said, I agree. I think we would have to look at everything in its totality. I would want to see numbers showing the effectiveness. I also think that it would be crucial that when we actually are looking at prioritizing and cuts, we have to focus on the children who are most at need. Identifying those who are most needy, who need the most resources, and seeing what those programs are that we can make sure that those are absolutely not on the chopping block in any way. We also need to focus on keeping jobs. When we're looking at a potential economic downturn in our own community, we want to make sure that teachers and staff and administrators that we are taking into consideration the effect that losing their jobs will have on our students and on our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our final candidate for this question will be Mr. Foster.
Visalia Unified has been very fortunate to have a tremendous chief financial officer. We just lost Robert Graber, who is probably the top financial person in the Central Valley. The good news is that we have a replacement in Nathan Hernandez. It has always been Mr. Graber's motto that the cuts that we make would be the furthest away from the classroom. And that this board has always tried to do. And we will continue to do that. We also need to, as previous respondents have said, we need to have surveys. What does the community want from us? We are their servants. We work for you. We will then implement what you feel is the proper way to go. And I'm very, I have had experience in cutting budgets. I served on a board where a previous superintendent had a larger deficit than this, but I have experience.
Thank you very much. Our next question is, what is your stance on Prop 15? If Prop 15 is passed, how would you prioritize spending the money in your district? And we'll start off with Ms. Feliz's question.
Okay, thank you. So yes, I believe in Prop 15 because it is dedicated to schools in our community. It closes a loophole so that we can get extra funding. And our schools stand to make two, between $2 billion and $4 billion in revenue to our schools, which is severely needed. It's endorsed by the CTA and SEIU, among other organizations. So I believe that it has the right purpose in serving our community and serving our students in our schools. I think that the funds should be used on bringing back the deficit that currently exists, paying down some of our debt so that we don't continue raising our debt and we don't have to sacrifice staff, our support staff, or teachers in the process. Teachers are severely underpaid, and they should be getting paid a fair salary. And so should our support staff. They are needed to bring about an effective education system for our students. So that's where the funding should go, definitely.
Thank you. Our next question is Ms. Gaby, same question.
So I will agree with that. I do think that we should be in favor of Prop 15 because of the money that it will bring towards schools. It does close some of the loopholes on inherited property and things like that and also provide some housing relief for Californians. And so anything that's good for our economy and our community is going to benefit our schools. You know, our students and their parents, the health of them and the health of the money that goes into our school district is all money we can put back into educational programs, teacher salaries, classified. And so yes, I think that we should be in favor of Prop 15. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question is for Ms. Alstet.
Beard. Okay, sorry. First off, let's be clear that Prop 15 is not coming after homeowner personal property tax. This is a split role for Prop 13. I don't know of any school district who would turn away money coming in. And I know looking at the projected amount, Visalia would qualify for about $18.5 million. You know, $18.5 million would be a great supplement to some of the current programs, would help, you know, institute some potential new programs. I do have to say, I do have some concerns about what this is going to mean for some of our Valley farmers because it is going to affect them, some of their, some of our farms. You know, again, $18.5 million, adding that to the budget, there's all kinds of things that we could look at supplementing and supporting. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Mr. Evans with the same question.
I am philosophically against any propositions that are on the ballot, generally because they're put there by special interests. And I feel as though that our legislators are elected to do a job. And if they felt as though that the provisions of Proposition 15 should be implemented, then that should have been legislated and not turned over to the voters. The voters, I think, are asked to make decisions too often on propositions that are, that they just don't want to take the political clout or they don't want to take the political hit, let's say. So philosophically and personally, I'm against propositions. However, if this proposition were to pass, and of course, I wouldn't want to turn away the money, for sure. We need to invest in our infrastructure. Teacher salaries is something I also agree with. But our infrastructure, I mean, we learned that through this pandemic that we are behind with our IT implementations, that we need to make an investment in that area. So.
We'll ask the same question to Mr. Foster.
Yes. Propositions, of course, are funded by special interests. What's good about this proposition is that small businesses will not be hurt. There is a limit established where anything below a certain amount, small businesses won't be attacked. This is going after people like Disneyland, Hewlett-Packard, huge corporations that have a tremendous amount of revenue. And it has been distorted over the years that they have not paid. So I am very much in favor of Prop 15. I would, of course, spend it in the classroom. But special education is an area that I would like to see funded. And also, I'd like to have it go to the sites. I believe in site-based funding. I served on school site councils, and I know that the people at the lowest level know best where to fund their school. Thank you very much.
We'll go next up to Ms. Salino with the same question.
Yeah, so I support Prop 15. The thing about Prop 15 is that ever since Prop 13 passed back, I think in the 80s, our spending on schools has continued to drop. And that is because we don't have the property tax revenue that we had. And so you can see a direct correlation between our spending in schools and our schools plummeting to the lower portions of student success across the nation. The less money we spend per student, the less our students tend to succeed. And so I think that Prop 15 closes a loophole for corporations, and it makes it so that the rest of us, we don't have to worry about our property taxes increasing. It doesn't affect your average homeowner, your elderly homeowner. And so I think that it's really important to distinguish that. But I think that California schools, not just here but everywhere, we need the money to help our students and make sure that they're getting the resources they need.
Thank you. Mr. Pope, you're up next.
Good, thank you. You know, I think Prop 15 was going strong until COVID hit. And it hurt our corporations here in California. So now we're saying, not only are they having limited revenue that has changed, but we're going to give them this new tax. So that kind of changed my perspective. Also, the fact that it affects me personally, as my in-laws own a dairy. I've done my homework, and there are taxes that will be affected to our farmers and related structures. But as a board member, who is going to turn away funds? So I'm hoping it passes so that I will have these funds to spend. And being on school site council, I, for years, have said, we need social workers. How can I teach this child that is struggling from, yeah, I see that, Feliz, that's struggling from a parent argument the night before or gang-related?
Thank you very much. Dr. Vasquez will be the last person to answer this question, and then we'll move on to question number four. So go ahead.
I hope you can hear me okay. I seem to be having some technical difficulties here. Our schools are severely underbudgeted. So I would say the first chunk should really go through to the classroom. I do have to say that I do support Prop 15. It is targeted to the top 10%. Small business will not be affected. It's $3 million in property. If you have, your business has over $3 million in property, that's where it kicks in. There's also an Agwever. And I do agree with Mr. Evans that many of the propositions, like 22, is special interests. But in this case, it really is going to go to our community and to the schools. I don't know how many of you realize, but the teachers and the classified staff all took a cut, everybody took a cut, a one-day cut, so that we could make our budgets. We did ask for everybody to, you know, look over their local ones and take a 10% cut. So I think definitely something coming back to the, back to the salaries and some bonuses or right into that would be a good way to handle that. And then.
Thank you. We will move on to question number four. Students of color and LGBTQ students have reported issues of bias from other students and staff members. What role should the board take to ensure all students be safe in school? And we'll start question four with, off with Mr. Evans.
Okay, thank you. This is a very important issue. I have read the online comments by a number of students that talked about their experiences in school and how those experiences have affected them emotionally. have affected them emotionally. What was most disturbing is that a lot of these students had reported these incidents to administrators on, on the campus, and those, those reports went no further. The, as a board member, I would want to see a program implemented that is district-wide and covers all school sites where these, these issues are logged in a log and are followed up on either by a member of the district office or someone in HR perhaps, and someone who would be qualified to follow up on these. And then I'd want the results reported to the board, not necessarily in a public setting, but perhaps in closed session, to ensure that these issues are being addressed appropriately. Students need to feel safest.
Thank you. Ms. Feliz, you're up next with the same question.
Thank you. So the board represents the leadership within the school district, and so they definitely have a role in enforcing an inclusive and equitable environment. Oftentimes, the functionality and culture of organizations is a direct reflection of the leadership. So I believe the leadership needs to reflect the no tolerance policy in bullying or any type of bias or racial injustice or abuse towards children. So I think racial slurs, prejudice of any form should be considered a bullying. If someone's called the N-word or, or there are anti-LGBTQ slurs, that should be considered a form of bullying. It should be considered a zero tolerance policy. And we need to hold our staff accountable as well. You know, bullying is a learned behavior, and it's learned by adults. And so we need to hold our staff accountable as well. We should not have teachers or superintendents, anyone, those types of biases and prejudices. And the board has the power to stop that.
Thank you. Our next candidate up with the same question is Ms. Gaby.
Thank you. Yes, our schools and our district leaders, they have a significant opportunity and responsibility to create learning environments that are safe and common ground for all students. That's the only way that they are all going to reach their potential is in a safe environment that is safe physically, socially, emotionally. But I think it really goes beyond just policies and consequences while those are necessary and the first layer of this approach. It's really, we are a learning organization, so we influence beliefs and behaviors through teaching, and that is adults and children. And so how do we engage our community in a dialogue so that we have a common understanding of what does that mean for discrimination, harassment, intimidation, bullying? Do we all have a common understanding? And then talk to our students. What does inclusivity look like to them? Often, we go as the adult, and we're doing all the talking, and we're proposing all the solutions. But what means inclusion to a 45-year-old woman is very different than a teenager.
You're up next.
Okay. So, well, in a perfect world, Prop 15 passes, and we have eighteen and a half million extra dollars, which then allows us to hire additional counselors and social workers who can work with our teachers, who can work with our students, who can work with our administrative teams. I will tell you, one of the most powerful things I, I have done in the last few years is to do several years at several different levels of unconscious bias training. And I think that would be something that our board, our administrators, our teachers, our classified staff, everybody who's in contact with students would be well-served to do that unconscious bias training. Because when you do that openly and honestly, and you find out those things that you don't think you're doing, that you are saying that you are doing, it is a big eye-opener. And I think that would be one step in the right direction.
Thank you. Dr. Vasquez, you're up with the same question.
Okay, thank you. I think we have made some strides in the idea of equity and student services. We have a whole new department. We've been having a common core committees with the staff, with the community and the students. So there has been some strides that we've changed to kind of have those movements. I think the transparency, I really fought hard for transparency and accountability so that voices could be heard, but they can also be documented and that we know that we've got that, that follow-up. So I do agree with a lot of what everybody has said here. I have been a real support and advocate for the LGBTQ+ community and really try to educate my fellow board members. I have called staff on certain things when we had things happening on campus or just the way that we approached each other and the way that the board was, was approached. I pushed hard to talk about sexual responsibility and comportment because the way that boys and girls are treated is not always the same, and the way that we address things is not always the same. So yes, we have a lot of work to do, and I can really, I've been pushing for it, I bet.
Thank you very much. Mr. Pope, you're up next.
Yes, absolutely. All students deserve to be safe. I'm very proud of a group that was on the campus, Annie R. Mitchell, during my years of teaching there. The school psychologist hosted a group that would meet during their lunchtime and had times to address some of these questions. I'm also proud of our board in keeping our, our police on our campuses. I know that was a close vote, but the board members that voted against that, they're not on the campus. They don't see the importance of how our officers are relating to our students. And I've seen officers that are, develop relationships with gang members. And I, I acknowledge that they play a huge part in, in helping to make our students feel safe. As far as staff, we need to be sensitive, and we do have staff development to make us aware. Thank you.
Ms. Salino, you're up next with the same question.
Yes, so I think that we have to be very clear that discrimination and racism cannot be targeted in our schools in anywhere, shape or form. That's just something that we can't allow. And I also think that we need to acknowledge that the issues that have happened in our schools from Dear VUSD and how we're hearing about it from these students. One incident we can handle, two incidents we can handle, maybe that's a bully. Being sued by the ACLU and having this, students from all across the district talking about it, it means that we have a pervasive problem, and it's something that we need to deal with from a top-down level. This is not something where we can just expel or suspend one student. This is something that is going to take our entire community and our administration and our teachers to fix. We need the training, the bias training. We also need honest conversations. We need history about what's been happening in our own community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Foster, you're up next.
Thank you. I'm really excited to answer this question. In January, this board had a board retreat. Under our district leadership led by our new superintendent, one of the major goals, she had three major goals. And the second major goal that she had was student equity. And this board has followed through. Number one, we passed the strongest anti-bigotry, anti-racist resolution in the history of this district. Dr. Vasquez and I fought for implicit bias training. We have created the position of student equity run by Brandon Gridiron. And what that position does is foster the positive school cultures. We have made progress. The ACLU and the district are very close to an agreement. They are agreement that we are making progress. It, progress isn't fast enough. It isn't perfect, but we're getting there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're going to move on to question number five, which is, discipline across the district is becoming an issue over the past several years. What role should the board have in setting and implementing discipline policies? And we'll start that question with Mr. Pope.
Great. Thank you for giving me time to think this through. No, actually, one of my, that's one of my platforms, so I'm prepared for this one. As, as a classroom teacher, it was difficult for me to have a problem student, out-of-control student, and have to evacuate the building over one student. I, I have to say, I'm pleased with the, the board. They, they were laying some good groundwork, and then COVID hit. But they were really focusing, Mr. Gridiron was wanting to have these students out of the classroom sooner. And the documentation, it's so important for teachers to document the issues and the problems so that they can be moved out sooner. But it's, it's so much fatigue on us as teachers to have to deal with these ongoing issues. So we need to deal with a discipline problem. And I think we've got a good start.
Thank you very, thank you very much. Our, our next person up with question number five would be Dr. Vasquez.
This is a good question. It is, it is tricky. We have tried several things. We did, we've installed different programs. We've looked at restorative practices. We've done a lot of interventions. I think the really important part is to really look at the, understand the root of the problem. You know, what's causing the behavior? If a student can't read, and you're, you're, he's getting in trouble because they're not doing what they need to do, and they're not reading, and they're not doing their homework, and you're not addressing the fact that he can't read, and you're trying to get him to read in front of the classroom. I think that's just a real important part. So making sure that the structure's in the place, in place that you can be able to identify what the root causes of a lot of the stuff is. When you have students that don't have very good communication skills, or they're having lots of stuff going at home, the social, emotional skills are just so important. So I think we need to do a better job of being able to evaluate those. And we have put some things in place. We got a very good survey program that came in to evaluate as low as fourth grade, how people are feeling, you know.
Mr. Foster, you're up next.
Yes, this is also a question I'm really excited about answering. I think it's important to have people who look like the community that they represent. And I think if you have a role model leading your school, or you have a role model in your classroom, I think that's one major step in reducing discipline problem. Actually, our district has reduced the level of suspensions, and we have reduced expulsions. We also have another, a new campus, and that specializes in handling our hardest core problems and returns students back into the classroom. And I'm very proud of our efforts in reducing suspensions and expulsions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. Next up, Ms. Salino, same question.
So one of the reasons that discipline has come into focus in the past several years is because we moved from an old discipline model to a new discipline model. And that model was really based more on trying to right the wrongs of the past. And what I mean by that is that our old discipline models across the country were disproportionately affecting students with learning disabilities, special education students, students of color. And so when we, when you see that play out, the thought was, instead of expelling and suspending students, we need to try and figure out ways that we can correct their behavior without resorting to excluding them from our school communities. And I think that in order for that to work, and I think the thing that has, has been lacking in VUSD has been a buy-in. And buy-in is communication, it's getting support from the teachers, making sure that everyone knows why these policies are being implemented, and also just giving them that support.
Thank you. Ms. Gaby, you're up next.
Thank you. So yes, I think that our discipline policy needs to start with clear expectations that everyone understands and those sets of rules and consequences. But really, like Dr. Vasquez said, it's about what are the root causes of that? Do we understand what's motivating that student? And then do we have things in place to start to teach the behaviors that will be successful? So do we understand what kind of climate will allow all students to flourish? And do we teach those behaviors? Do we know what kind of district climate's going to allow our educators to flourish as teachers and serving our students? Do we know the behaviors that we want students to learn so that they can be successful once they leave our system? What are those dispositions? And then can we collectively define those and have metrics towards moving to those goals? So that we can really also, going back to the budget question, align our resources to support those practices.
Thank you. Ms. Feliz, you're up next with the same question.
Okay. So again, the board is the leadership of the district, so they should absolutely be involved in ensuring the district is not overzealous in disciplining students through suspensions and expulsions and essentially ripping their education away from them. The, the board has the ability to deliver a balance and unbiased policy and has the potential to rule out implicit bias and access to restorative justice. We should move toward alternative methods, I think, and effectiveness through evidence-based practices such as mindfulness and group therapy, or, you know, in-school suspensions instead of write-out suspension and expulsions. We need to eliminate the school-to-prison pipeline, which is happening with many of our students of color who are suffering from mental health, who suffer abuse and trauma and racial prejudice. And so the board can provide that extra layer and provide a balance and unbiased view and, and stop when there is overzealousness in our disciplinary actions.
Mr. Evans, you're up.
Okay, great. The role of the board in implementing discipline should really be first identifying to make sure that they have the right people in place to assess students' needs when there is a discipline problem, and then implementing the right kind of solution. In my experience, in attending board meetings and seeing what's going on on campus and so forth, I really do feel as though that we have the right people in place. I think the last effort with the PBIS, from what I understand, the teachers had primarily bought into the program, but didn't feel as though that they were supported by the administration. So, and of course, the administration didn't feel as though that the teachers probably implemented it. So obviously, communication is imperative in whatever program we decide that we're going to implement. But we got to make sure that we understand what the difficulties are and make sure that we have the right people in place to preside, provide solutions for those problems.
We'll wrap up this question with Ms. Alstead.
Thank you. So bottom line, it's got to be a team effort. It's the board working with the superintendent, who works with the site administrators, who work with the teachers, who work with the classified staff. It is a social, emotional issue. You know, I, I went to some of those sessions that the board had prior to COVID. I did think that they were moving in a good direction. You know, the fact that there was looking at more of this whole team approach, you know, when we have the situation, this is where it gets out of control. When the teacher has a problem with a student, and I'm too busy with the rest of this class, you get out of here and get to the office. The kid goes down, and in five minutes, the kid's back in the room. We haven't done anything to help solve the problems of why that student did whatever the student did that caused them to leave, or how that teacher took that. We have to have a team that works together to, as several people have said, get to the root of what is the issue. Not every kid.
Thank you. We'll move on to number, question number six. Do you agree with the board's decision to delay plans for a fifth comprehensive high school in favor of redrawing district, redistrict lines? And we'll start that question with Ms. Salino.
Yeah, so I don't think that they're delaying plans for the fifth high school was entirely in their hands. I think that there was an understanding that we would receive matching funds from the state in order to fund the other part of the bond and of the money that we needed to build the high school. And so I think that we were really let down by Sacramento, that we were planning on that money and, and we thought it was there. I remember talking to Dr. Odo and, and, you know, he had any, every intention to show that that money was supposed to be backed, and it simply fell through. So I don't think we should give up on building a fifth high school. I think we don't have the funds for it right now, and we're not going to have the funds until, until we get those, those. But I do think that eventually, we're going to need a fifth high school. Our population is, is growing. And right now, if we're redrawing lines, we need to make sure that they're equitable.
Thank you. Ms. Foster, you have the, you have the floor on this question.
Well, thank you very much. I'm very excited. In 2018, the VICEUians generously approved a bond issue for a fifth high school. Unfortunately, in March, the, the decision was taken out of our hands because of the failure of Proposition 13. Now, this board is going to modernize schools with $35 million, which will provide jobs for the. which will provide jobs for the local, in the local economy. The town is growing. The board will not, as my position, that we should keep the remaining authority to, with the bond money, to keep it instead of canceling that authority. So therefore, we have the flexibility, if another bond issue is passed, to build a fifth high school. If, if it isn't passed, then obviously we'll have to look at other alternatives.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. Ms. Feliz, you're up next with the same question.
So yeah, I agree with the decision. If the state couldn't deliver and provide the agreed-upon funding, then there wasn't enough funding available to build this school. So I think it was a smart decision to table that for the meantime as we don't want to continue creating debt that we can't pay off or that we can't match. When drawing boundaries, I believe, I believe it can be good, but we need to ensure that we're not drawing boundaries and gerrymandering to, to prevent an inclusive environment. We need to ensure that boundaries are being drawn that provide diversity and inclusion and not increasing the lack of diversity, which currently exists in some areas. And we also need to be cognizant of the student population within our schools. And so I do believe we are growing and we do need another high school, but we also need to have the funds adequately to build it and adequately fund it and, and staff it. So we need to be cognizant of that and aware of that and not overextend ourselves.
Thank you. Mr. Evans, you're up next.
This is a question right up my alley since I am on the Bond Oversight Committee for Measure 8. We participated in a number of discussions with the community and we ended up making the recommendation to the board that we not build new high school. They literally was going to put the district 70 to 90 million dollars in debt based on the plans that, that were originally submitted for the, the big large complex with the swimming pool and the stadium and so forth and so on. Let's talk about enrollment. Golden West right now has 1,950 students. Redwood has 2,561. El Di Monte, 2,113. And Mount Whitney, 1702. We absolutely need to visit rebound, looking at these boundaries. It is not equitable the way that it is now and it is providing for inequity and our students to be able to access the visual and performing arts and athletics that they want to participate in.
Thank you. Mr. Alston, you're up next.
Thank you. Well, absolutely. You know, we don't put the district farther in debt by building a school we can't afford. Mr. Evans just pointed out with the numbers we have, absolutely. Right now, the way to relieve our schools that are severely impacted and overcrowded is we need to look at redrawing our district boundaries and our district lines. You know, but that's something that needs to be done carefully. We do need to look at how are we balancing the schools with the student population? You know, it's not just a numbers game. We don't just play a numbers game and a shell game. It's how do we properly balance all of our schools? And then down the line, we go back and we look, okay, we've got to build this school. Now here's how we're going to properly fund that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gaby, you're up next. Same question.
So I think it's actually two separate topics in a sense because I think first, the balancing of student population should be a priority. A school's population really determines some of the programs and opportunities that it can provide. And we've alluded to that where at a smaller school, there's more opportunity for visual and performing arts and making the athletic teams. But at a larger school, you can offer a lot more courses, variety of schedules. And so I think, and then the bigger issue in boundary decisions is that the process we've engaged in in the past has been ineffective because once we receive recommendations, we often don't follow through with that. We go with personal biases or pressure from a particular group. And so then even after a boundary study, we end up with inequity in our schools. Every school should be desirable and our, our district needs to look at that if we have pockets that seem more favorable than others.
Thank you. Our next question, same question, Dr. Vasquez.
Can I just first say that I'm just so impressed with all of you? Great answers, everybody. I, I think eventually we'll need a, a new high school. We do need to redraw the lines. And remember those difficult situations that I was talking about, those difficult decisions? Redraw, doing a boundary study and redrawing is one of the hardest decisions that we've had to do. When my daughter was in elementary school and they decided to move from Crowley, sent Crowley students to Divisadero and to Mount Whitney, it was just devastating for us. A couple of years ago, when we draw, when we drew a line, I had a parent actually come up to me that I knew and in tears telling me I had ruined her life. I mean, this is serious. This is where kids are going to go to school and where their stuff is. So these are the really difficult decisions. The good news is that we can accommodate. And Mr. Evans gave these numbers. If we shift things around, it's not easy. There's a lot of things to take in consideration, but we do have the room for everybody. And, you know, the, the, the board, a few years ago, when we did it, we did that soft, 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 soft landing. People were more concerned about, you know, am I going to get recalled? You know, am I going to be safe than really making those hard decisions?
Thank you. Mr. Foster will wrap up this question with you.
Okay, thank you. Boy, I agree. Some wonderful answers and, and solutions. Can I just say ditto? No. I, I, I have to agree. I, I agree with the board. I agree with them because of the delay and, and the lacking of funds. And as I mentioned before, you know, with COVID hitting, I, I think it's going to be a long time before the state recovers and before we're able to build this new high school. That doesn't mean that we don't need it. Absolutely. It, it, Visel is growing and, and we need to be able to do the re-districting and, and making sure that the high schools, there's equity and that, that, that there's balance among our students. So yes, I do agree.
Um, we are going to take a about, about a 10-minute break to let everyone stretch their legs and use the, get some water or, or use the restroom. And then we'll move on to questions from the public. We will be back here at 7:28 for questions from the public and we'll, we'll see you then. And hopefully everyone will stay on log on. We'll be see everyone back at 7:28. Okay? We'll be back on live in about 10 seconds. Welcome back to our Visel Unified School District. We are going to be moving into the questions from the audience and I'll be adding all our candidates back into our broadcast as we speak. So welcome back everyone to the forum. And we will be going into, as I said, questions from the, the audience. I just want to make sure is everyone back and everyone can hear me? Looks like everyone can hear me and we are back. The first question, unfortunately, we won't, the questions will not be up on the screen like before. If you need to, if you have questions back, let me know and I will do that. If not, I'll just say, we'll throw it back to you and go from there. So the first question is, "The Visel Unified School District has subpar standardized test scores in mathematics and language arts, particularly in elementary schools. How will the board address these issues?" And we will start off that question with Mr. Foster.
Yes. I want you to know that although we've had lower scores in the past, last year we had higher math scores for the first time. In our board retreat that was in January, one of the priorities of our super, new superintendent was in math. We are very fortunate to have Mr. Phil Black, who is our math coordinator. And what we're going to do is we're going to have more programs like our science that are more cooperative based, that more individuals be together, learning together. And I think through those methods, we will have better progress. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. Ms. Olney, if, Selena, do you need me to repeat the question or can you just answer?
I'm good.
All right, go ahead.
And so I think that obviously that's a big concern. I think that particularly for families, when they're moving into an area in, in a neighborhood, they're always looking at test scores because that identifies to them whether school is quote, good or not. I think we do need to look outside of just looking at test scores for that assessment. But I think that we could really help test scores by focusing on early education and reading. I know that there are reading programs. by focusing on early education and reading. I know that there are reading programs that exist in the district that we could elevate, we could try, and if we have the funding to do it, because it is so important to put that funding to early reading. I also think that one of the big pushes in the state of California for many years has been teaching children a second language, because we know that kids who speak a second language are better readers, are better at critical thinking. And so I think that trying to push second languages and, like I said, early reading and really focusing and figuring out who is at risk and who we need to help will help us.
Thank you. Mr. Pope, you're up next. Do you need me to read the question?
No, I'm fine. Thank you. I agree with what has been said that there are some sites, I was blessed to be at a site where our scores were increasing. I think a lot of that was the collaboration that takes place among the staff and of course, that is spearheaded by the principal. Something that I would like to do when I'm on the board is to have a reading intervention specialist at all of our grammar schools. I think that too many of our students are falling through the cracks. A lot of my teaching was done in first and second grade and early elementary, and I think that there's no reason that we can't have our students reading at grade level by the time they reach third grade. And even though that's a huge, big budget item, what a payoff. I think that that is worth our investment.
Thank you. Ms. Vasquez?
You already did. That's Dr. Vasquez. Yes, I think that we've done a lot of things to try to push that. We've recognized that. We've set a lot of stuff in place, having all students at reading by third grade at grade level and by eighth grade, really working on the math. I agree with Mr. Pope. I think the idea of reading intervention is really important. And I'm bringing resources. I've been talking with the NUW, who are plentiful in retired teachers, to bring in the some of those, some of, maybe that's just an idea, but community members, reading intervention, in three weeks, you can bring somebody up. There's many things that can be done. Because I know you guys gave me the flash already. I have lots to say, but okay, my time's up.
Mr. Evans, you're up next.
Okay, well, I liked what Dr. Vasquez just had to say. Bringing the community in to assist is a great way to involve our community in the mentoring and learning for our students. But you know, if we keep doing what we're doing, we're going to keep getting what we got. We got to do something different. My suggestion would be to actually split the 30,000 students that we have in this district into an elementary district and a junior high and high school district, or at least have a line of authority with those two districts, so that we can really focus on our elementary school children, the way that they need to learn and what they need to have to be able to do that, and our secondary students, eighth grade through high school, so that they also can follow a path of success and get the help that they need in order to succeed.
Thank you. Ms. Alstead, you're next.
Awesome. So, hire and retain the best qualified staff that you can get. Support them with the materials that they need. Support them with any training that they need. And then make sure you have a really strong visual and performing arts program in the district. Research shows that kids who are involved in the visual and performing arts consistently score higher on tests than those that are not. What's one of the reasons for that? They're happy. Okay? You have given them something other than everything's just a strict academic piece. They're engaging their brain in a different way. And that, they walk out of that class and now can go to that math class and retain more of what they're learning. They can go to that language arts class and retain more of what they're learning, because we filled the soul, we've cleared the mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gaby, you're up next with the same question.
So, this is a great question. Are our test scores where we would want them to be? No, but I think the policy is to believe that they haven't been increasing. They have been increasing in the last five years at a rate that is commensurate with our state's graduate rate and above the schools in our county. But how we have a slow growth rate is really that focus on the foundational skills and not those short-term gains. We've put a lot of priority into early reading and that will get our students farther long-term. We've all started, I think we need to look at it student by student. All means all. So, is every student making growth? And what research tells us is that principals need to be instructional leaders and that we need to learn from each other's successes. Conyra has gone up two levels from orange to green in two years. How do we learn from that and all of us learn together through the successes and collaboration?
Thank you. We'll go on to Ms. Feliz for the final candidate for the question.
Thank you. So, as has been said, scores continue to increase, but I think we need to prioritize and truly figure out what's preventing our students from learning. We need to have smaller class sizes so teachers can adequately and effectively teach these students and give them individual attention if they're needed. We need to bring tutors in and tutors from the community, like Dr. Vasquez said, would be a great idea to effectively help these kids to learn. We can't continue to keep moving them forward as they continue to fall through the cracks. So, we have to stop them before they fall through those cracks and really address their needs. We have to increase social emotional learning, because studies show that when their mental health and their social and emotional needs are met, that they learn better. If we figure out what barriers they are facing that's preventing them from learning, then they can effectively learn. So, we have to address those other issues besides just test scores that will, in the end, effectively bring up their test scores and help them to learn in better and effective methods.
Thank you. We'll go on to the next question from the audience. "Are you happy with the district's current COVID-19 plan? What changes, if any, would you push for as a trustee?" And we will start this question off with Dr. Vasquez.
No. I think that we really lacked at being able to have a systemic communication. I think we really struggled with being able to hear the public and to hear the teachers, especially in our last few board meetings. I think even our translation that we've been offering, we've had a learning curve this whole time. For the last few months, we've really had a learning curve. We had a new administration when the pandemic hit. And I just think that we could have, you know, we could have done better. And I don't remember the rest of the question, but we're working on it. The teachers have stepped up, the site admin have stepped up. We have learned and grown so much, but yes, we need to do better. And hopefully, we can do that together. And I'm looking forward to opening those communications and being able to together come back with a plan that is feasible for most, because we can't please everybody, unfortunately. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pope, you're up next with the question. If you need me to reread it to you, I will.
No, I'm fine. Thank you. In the beginning of COVID, I was not happy with the way the board was proceeding. I think there were other districts nearby that immediately had access to their Chromebooks and they held the parents and the students accountable, which is what we lacked. I definitely think there's been improvement. My daughter-in-law teaches in Bakersfield, actually, she's a resource specialist, but they waited two weeks before they started school. And I think we rushed into things. I think that would have been a good solution, because our teachers started the year so panicked and stressed. And I know that our teachers right now are so overwhelmed and they cannot continue at the pace that they're going. Thankfully, the COVID numbers are going down and let's pray that, let's get school open again.
Thank you. We'll go to Ms. Alstead next. And again, if any of the candidates need me to reread the question, just ask me.
So, I think I got the gist of it. Boy, in a one minute. The first big problem I see right now is the schedule. I mean, the teachers are screaming, "This is killing us. We can't do this." The district is not listening to us. The superintendent is not listening to us. The board is not listening to us. You know, you watch a board meeting, the superintendent says, "Oh, no, we've consulted this group." You know, somebody, there's some issues. There's something going on there. We got to fix that. You know, there are very few people in this area that truly have the training for what does distance learning mean? I mean, I have my blended and online certification. It took me a long time to get that. It was a lot of work. You know, there's a lot that needs to be done, but until we start communicating and everybody's coming to the table, it's not going to be solved.
Thank you very much. We'll go with, the next person for this question is Ms. Gaby.
So, I will agree with what's being said. No, I don't think we have done a great job. And I think that what we're mentioning, that lack of input, was the majority of the issue. And not only the lack of input, but when we get that input. We often bring a plan when it's already done and we're already married to it and starting to implement it. How do we get early input from students, from families? You know, students are her first priority. How are they feeling about this? How do we get input from the site level? We're talking about high school schedules. Why are there not high school administrators in the room? Those are the people that know it day-to-day. Those are the experts. There's also issues with, you know, Schoology. It's a platform that we know takes a year to implement in any situation, in the best of situations. And now we're trying to implement in a week in stressful circumstances. So, I think...
Thank you. Ms. Feliz, you're up next with the question.
Thank you. So, no, I wasn't happy with how the district handled COVID-19 and I'm still not happy with it. I think all of the parties involved are suffering right now, right? Teachers, parents, students, they're all suffering and no one is listening. No one's communicating effectively. And those things are needed in order for this to be better. We needed a plan and that plan wasn't in place. Teachers were not given the tools they need or the training they need to be able to teach from a distance. And so, we need to bring back to the table, revisit this. We are in uncharted territory and times that we've never had to face before. So, why can we not adapt and adjust? And so that's what needs to happen right now. We need to be able to listen to teachers. They know what may work. They have ideas. Parents have ideas. They're not teachers. Students may have ideas. What would help them learn from home better? So, we need to be able to be bringing these people to the table, listening, communicating, and collaborating.
Thank you. Mr. Evans, you're up next.
Thank you. No, I am absolutely not happy about the way things are going under these circumstances. And I've written into the board many times. The problem is that you have to write into the board or you have to schedule a telephone call. You cannot speak as topics are being raised. The one thing that I think was a mistake on the part of the board is that, and of course, Monday morning quarterbacking is always great, but they should not have given the emergency powers to the superintendent. At least, they shouldn't have done so without some sort of set date that they were going to revisit this, because now all of these decisions are being taken out of the board's hands and are in the hands of the superintendent. So, one of the first things I'd like to see the board do is to relinquish that power and begin to take public input, parents, teachers, all stakeholders, to find them the best solutions.
Thank you. Salina, you're up next with the same question.
Yes, so one of the first things that I think we need to take a look at is the hybrid model. I know that, as I said, my husband's a teacher and I remember showing the hybrid schedule to him. And one of the first things he said was, "When are the teachers going to have time to prep or to do anything?" It was one of the things he noticed immediately. And so, I know that that schedule had to have lacked teacher input and oversight. And so, I think we have to look at that hybrid model. I think that's why teachers are having a really hard time. And really, what's best for our students is when our teachers are prepared and ready to take on the challenges ahead of them. That's when they're going to get their best learning in. That's when they're going to feel the most supported. And so, we really have to take that into consideration. And I think that needs to be looked at. I also think that students are on the ground. They're in these classrooms and we haven't heard from them at all. We're not hearing that much from parents, but there haven't been any student surveys. There's been teacher surveys, parent surveys. We need to hear from the students themselves.
Thank you. Mr. Foster, we can wrap up this question.
Yep. Yes, as you know, this virus has killed 200,000 of our fellow Americans. It has killed about 200 Tulare County people. Our staff has immediately responded. Our superintendent closed the schools to prevent any deaths. I'm proud that we haven't had any deaths and I haven't had to write any condolence letters. Our staff, I went and visited Golden Oak and Conyra, the teachers, I mean, the principals are working on cohorts to have safe cafeterias. Vicki Wingfield is working on safe buses. We've established six task force to work on various areas to prevent this virus from being even more deadly. Has it been perfect? Of course not. We knew that going in, but we're making progress. When I visit teachers out on the street, all of them tell me, "Sure, it's not perfect, but we're getting better. It's like hitting a baseball or riding a bicycle. We weren't good on day one, but we're getting better." And I am proud of the steps that our superintendent took, feeding our population, getting Chromebooks out. I think she did a tremendous job. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think we've had a problem with our view. Sorry about that. We went to a single view, but we're back on to, everyone is on the screen at the same time. Our last question from the audience is, "How would you feel as a board member, how would you as a board member help keep the school board transparent and accountable to its stakeholders, namely students and their families? And how would you involve stakeholders in decision-making?" And we'll start off with Ms. Feliz on that question.
Can you repeat that question? It was pretty loaded.
Right. Sorry about that. We have a little technical problems. Question, "How would you as a board member keep the school board transparent and accountable to its stakeholders, namely students and their families? And how would you involve stakeholders in decision-making?"
So, I think that's a great question. And I think it's right up my alley, because it stands for what I believe in, is that the district does need to be transparent. And so, we, like I've said earlier, we need to be able to bring all those groups to the table. We can't have board meetings where teachers or the union only speak for three minutes and then are cut off and are not even given the time to effectively get their point across. So, we have to give them the adequate time to speak. We have to give them seats at the table. We have to have regular meetings with the teachers union, with the support staff, the SEA. We have to bring all those groups. We have to bring parents. We have to bring students to the table. We cannot have an effective education system if we are not including the people who this education system is supposed to work for. So, we have to. I would be willing to meet with any of them. I'd be willing to give them my phone number. I'd be willing to answer emails. I'd be willing to engage on social media and have social media platforms such as this to discuss it. I think we need to have meetings that is inclusive of all of those groups who are stakeholders in the education system, because it's necessary.
Thank you. Ms. Gaby, we'll go with the same question for you.
So, I think that the foundation of that is to create transparency, you really need communication and trust. And unfortunately, those are two things that are lacking in our district. Right now, communication is more messages or more telling, rather than a belief that communication is really about a two-way dialogue. It's about the exchange of information and it starts with me listening and being empathetic and seeking to understand what your concerns are. Like I mentioned before, how do we get input early before the decision has been made and involve all stakeholders, students, families, teachers, classified, admin, all of us, so that the best ideas come forward before we make those changes? And then, how do we build trust as a district with staff and with And then, how do we build trust as a district with staff and with parents? Because then, really, your best ideas come. Right now, there tends to sometimes be that lack of even ability to share your ideas because we don't always trust where those will be taken. So it really needs to be a two-way dialogue.
Thank you. Ms. Alstead, you're up next with the same question.
Sure. Well, I think the first thing for the board in this time of COVID is to have better communication during board meetings. Right now, there's not a great way for people to comment on multiple different items. You know, having to comment early, send something in in writing, or by this time, let us know to call you is not working. You know, people don't have trust because, again, that dialogue is back and forth is not happening. There are ways to do that, even in a digital world, and we've got to figure that out. You know, we have to hold, the board holds some community forums like this. You can do this over Zoom, you know, but we're not listening to people. And that's everybody, students, parents, community members, teachers, classified, admin. You know, it takes a community, and right now, we're not listening to everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. You're up next.
Great. I do think that what everybody has said is, makes a lot of sense. The difficulty is that the district really, the perception is the district operates independently of the community. And no district, nobody that does education for our students can ever operate independent from the community. It has to be one with the community. We need to bring these stakeholders in and get their opinions. But, you know, what we've demonstrated is that we are dictating what's happening. This is basically because the board has given that authority to the superintendent. We need to have parents come to board meetings and speak about what concerns them, or develop committees that will allow them to speak a little bit more freely in smaller groups if they're concerned about doing that in a large group. But community involvement is the basic tenet of what we need to be doing.
You're muted, Mr. Ward.
Mr. Foster, you're up next.
Okay. Like Ms. Casimir said, I couldn't hear you. Yes, we need more communication. That is a problem at the time. I want you to know that when our superintendent first took over as superintendent, she was visiting various community groups. I attended at McDonald's, community forums. If people want to get involved, we need to tell them more about our district advisory committees. We have district advisory committees. I've served on district advisory committees. I visit one school a week. I think being a school board member and visiting schools, you really find out what's going on at schools. I'm not isolated. Also, I think what I should do is probably be more like Supervisor Amy Shucklin. When she was a city councilwoman, she had community forums and went to malls and met with people and had office hours. I'd be great to do, glad to do.
Thank you. Ms. Selena, you're up next with the same question.
So transparency, getting at transparency, I think, is huge. And I think the big question, though, is we all want to be transparent, but how do we do it? Well, you have to ask questions. And I'm going to tell you that I am in a courtroom every single day, and that is what I do. I cross-examine, I ask tough questions, I advocate for those who I am there to represent. And that is something that I feel, that I can bring to the table because that's my training, that's my expertise, that is something that no one else on the board currently has. And I think that it would be super valuable to have that. And then the question is, well, where do those questions come from? Now, in a legal courtroom, those questions are coming from preparation, from looking at my case, from talking to witnesses, from talking to my client. In a boardroom setting, those questions are going to come from the parents. How am I communicating with parents? I have to be visiting schools to make sure that those questions and concerns that they have, that I'm able to address those. But questions, questioning is so important, and it needs to happen.
Thank you. Mr. Pope, you're up next with the question.
I think our board has been working on being transparent. There are some advantages to being one of the first ones to respond, because now I feel like I'm being repetitious. But we really do need that, the talks with the Teachers Association and CSEA. As an American Indian, I was involved in Visalia Unified's Bureau of Indian Affairs and how we allocate funds for our American Indian students. And, you know, we're blessed in Visalia with so much diversity, and we need to celebrate that diversity by our community involvement. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll wrap up this question with Dr. Vasquez.
Yeah, I think it's actually a twofold answer, and I think some of you have hit upon that. I think we really need to develop that trust back that I believe has been lost through in this terrible pandemic. But the mechanism is actually in place. By law, when we did the LCAP, any question that came in had to be publicized and answered. So it's not just a matter of surveys. Have the mechanism to have everybody come in and do that. Then we would set up and bring teachers and bring people from the community and school sites in to come and do those questions. So the mechanism is there, but I think we need that extra layer of committees. Once we get all the questions and we get all the answers, that we can work together to be able to move forward. So it's a lot of work, but it can be done. Oh, I still have 15 seconds. So I will just say again how impressed I am with everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move on to the closing statements for the forum. And we drew the order of closing statements, and I will go through that order right now. And we'll start with Ms. Selena. You have one minute.
Thank you. So I am here because I'm running, because I want change, and I think we need change. I think we need a fresh perspective, and I believe I am the strongest candidate to bring that in my area. I am a mom, and I know what it's like to raise children, to have children in your home, to be worried about getting out the door in the morning, worried about their education, worried about a million things that you're worried about when you're a parent. And I bring the perspective of a working parent to the board when we're making these crucial decisions. I'm the wife of a teacher. I go to bed next to my husband every night. I hear his concerns. I know what he's dealing with in his own district, but it's so applicable here and how we can support them. And then, lastly, I'm an attorney, and I work tirelessly, tirelessly, a public defender day in and day out. And I've perfected my advocacy skills, and I'm ready to take that and really take that in helping my community and making our schools better.
Thank you. Mr. Pope, you're up next.
Thank you to all of you that are taking your vote seriously, and you want to be an educated voter, and I respect you for that. I hope that I have convinced you that our board needs my experience, not only my classroom experience, but my business background that I, before I was even teaching. And you get the package deal, both. I'm proud of my endorsements. As candidates, Lucy and I are both being endorsed by the Teachers Association. I really take this as a compliment, as the incumbent has had the endorsement for the last nine years. I'm also personally endorsed by the majority of our current board members. And what this means is that I can work with our teachers as well as being a team player on our school board. I commit to you that I will regularly visit our schools and that I'll be present at our board meetings. Thank you, and I appreciate your vote.
Thank you. Mr. Evans.
Well, first of all, I want to thank, again, the League of Women Voters for this opportunity this evening. I mentioned a little earlier on that I think that one of the things that we need to do with the district, we have 30,000 students in this district, and it's very difficult to meet all the needs of all levels of education in one group. I really do think that we need to split the leadership of the district into a primary and a secondary group, rather than a certificated and a classified group. I've heard a lot about people needing educational background to be on the Board of Education, and I would submit that what we really need is a Board of Education, not a Board of Educators, which is what we, the majority of the board right now are educators. The last thing I wanted to say to all of you is to get involved in your community, participate in your child's education, and last but not least, get out and vote. Thank you.
Mr. Vasquez? Miss, Dr. Vasquez, I'm sorry.
Again, once again, thank you for hosting. I am committed to four more years. I do bring passion, experience, and trust. The district needs me. Change is coming. I will remind you, I do have a doctorate in education as well as a master's in literature and a bachelor's in biology. I really think we need to look at some things like dual immersion, which really shows an incredible academic excellence. And every school district that we've visited has done that. They're the top academic performers in the entire district. So we have some work to do, and I look forward to having many of you on my board. Thank you. Thank you for your vote. I'm done.
Thank you. We're up with Ms. Alstead next.
Thank you. Again, I would like to also thank the League of Women Voters and the Visalia Times Delta for hosting this evening. To the public, I'm on Facebook, I'm on Twitter. Look me up. If you have further questions, contact me. Be more than happy to have a dialogue with you and try and answer any questions that you still have. Thank you to the Visalia Teachers Association for putting your faith in me and endorsing me for school board. All I can promise you is that you are going to get with me somebody who understands education, who is open to listening, to our entire community, and will work hard and tirelessly for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. We're at Ms. Feliz, so you're up next for your closing statement.
I'd like to say thank you for having me, giving me this platform to speak on, but I want to say that I am an educator. But besides being an educator, I'm a community and public servant. I have been since 2012, when I began working for Health and Human Services as an eligibility worker and trainer on diversity and inclusion. And now I am a social worker. I worked for Child Welfare Services. Now I work for Tulare County Office of Ed, and I'm an adjunct professor and clinician. So I know what it means to be a public servant, and being voted into a position like this makes the public servant. So I know what that means and what it entails, and that you are essentially working for the public. I'm not here to serve my own personal agenda. It's here to serve the people and serve the teachers, the parents, the students, the staff who are included in the education system. I have an expertise background in mental health, in social emotional learning, in communication, in advocacy, in inclusion and diversity and collaboration. So I think all of those make me a great candidate to come to the board and bring a fresh and positive change to the board.
Ms. Gaby, you're up next with your closing statement.
So, you know, as an organization, Visalia Unified exists to create futures. But, you know, it was interesting, as the election process started, and I looked at the list of voters, and I noticed that there were former students that I still pictured as eight-year-olds. And I realized, the future isn't this far-off place. The future is now. In a few months, we're going to have graduates again. They are going to be entering college and career. And in addition to that, I am the candidate in Area 7 that has children in our district. I feel it every day and feel that urgency. There's nothing as brutally honest as your own child to look you in the face and make you live every decision that you make. You think it's going one way, and they say, "Let me tell you what the reality of that is." So I feel that urgency every day, and I know that I'm aligned, or I am committed to strong academic programs, career technical education, our athletics, our visual and performing arts, all of that goes into making a well-rounded student.
Thank you. And we'll wrap up closing statements with Mr. Foster.
I want to thank the various community groups that have sponsored this forum tonight. I enjoyed it immensely. I enjoyed meeting all of my competitors and friends. I want to say that I am a parent also. I have had four of my grandchildren here the last two years, so I know what children in the home are. I've also been endorsed by most community leaders. I've been endorsed by most educational leaders in this county. I have served and get along with my colleagues. We are making progress. I visit one school a week. I will continue that practice. I will have visited every single school. I am now almost retired. I will be able to devote full time to this job. I am grateful to have been elected. I'm grateful to have served, and I look forward to meeting all of you in the community once this campaign is over. Thank you very much.
Thank you for attending this forum. We will be having another forum on the State Assembly District and the Hospital Board next weekend, next Wednesday, not next weekend, next Wednesday. So if you're interested in those two races, we urge you to log in and watch that. This forum can be replayed on our website and on our Facebook. If you missed any part of it, or you wanted to go back and watch it again if you're sadistic, go ahead and do that. But for that, we'll wrap it up and tell everyone good night. Bye.